Ms. At.
Okay. At this time, we have a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, first on our agenda this evening, we have we have a presentation regarding Winter Lights fundraising effort by the Marion Leadership in Action Class, which is the program of the Marion Chamber of Commerce. Do we have someone here with us to make the presentation?
Hello, can you guys hear me? I think we're good. So yes, hello, everyone. My name's Carol Shepherd. I am the Events and Marketing Coordinator for the City of Cedar Rapids, the Freedom Festival. I am one part of the Marion and Leadership in Action Program. I counterpoint, Rachel, can you hear me? I just want to make sure I'm heard.
Carol, I can hear you. This is Jill.
Oh, hi. Yes, fantastic. And do we have Stephen in presence?
So, hey, Carol.
Yes.
This is Kelly from the library. I think they're having the same issues where everybody else that's not in council can hear you, but those in council chambers can't hear you. I think they're working on it.
No problem. I will stand by until we think we have it ready to go.
Sorry about that.
All right, can you hear me now, too?
Now they're going to spend 15 million on a new elementary.
Yes, we can hear you.
Sorry, we were having technical difficulties. I think we're getting back on live, so just a minute. If any of the other panelists can let me know if you can hear me.
I can hear you, Rachel. I can hear you too, Rachel.
Yep, Rachel.
Okay. We have everyone with us now? Okay, good. And we're still live to the public. Okay, great. We'll proceed with the meeting then and the presentation of the Marion Leadership in Action Class. Welcome.
Are we able to get our slideshow put up there would be fantastic. Got to love Zoom. Thank you so much, Rachel. Thank you, everyone. Hi, I'm Carol Shepherd. I am one part of the Marion and Leadership in Action Program for 2020, 2021. And I am the Events and Marketing Director for the City of Cedar Rapids, the Cedar Rapids Freedom Festival, but long-term resident here, well, at least seven years. So I feel a really great part of Marion, and I have my cohort here as well. Steve.
I'm Steve James. I am the GM out of Prospect Meadows and am in the Marion Leadership in Action Class as well. And we are excited to talk to you a little bit about the Winter Lights project we have going this year. So this fall, our Marion Leadership in Action Class Fall Project is to raise funds for the Winter Lights project with the previous work of the MLIA classes and with the support of the city council. Marion has purchased lights that are currently on display on the city square and the roundabouts to the east and the west of uptown.
And you have to say, talk about timing, right? 2020 has certainly had its challenges between COVID and the derecho. These lights have brought about a sense of normalcy, quite a bit of beauty to Marion this holiday season. And it isn't, isn't it just a little bit ironic that the lighting structures that were bought back in early March are actually trees? So it's almost a nod to all those precious trees that were lost during the derecho and the ash tree removal throughout the city of Marion.
Yeah, so the goal for the MLIA class and Marion in general is to add to light displays each year and also have the funds for the maintenance of the current lights. These lights are expensive. Thankfully, Jill and the crew has founded a steep discount come March when they go on sale after Christmas in the holiday season. But they are expensive, but the holiday cheer and holiday spirit these displays provide help make Marion such a great community and align with the mission to always reach higher.
So so far, we have seen so many amazing social media posts. It's been extremely positive, the feedback that the community has been giving us. A special shout out to Jill and Tammy and the social media team for the city. They've done a wonderful job of sharing posts of pictures of these new displays as you can see on your screen right now. And really, pictures do tell the story. They have helped us, our class fundraise, because the community now sees what their donation is actually going to go toward in future years. Many compliments about the fact that the community really is bringing the beauty back to to downtown Marion and really the surrounding area. It gives Marion residents something to do in a very unique year. I'm an events coordinator. I'm trying to create events for the city of Cedar Rapids, and I know the city of Marion has just had struggles in trying to to create the sense of normalcy in a year as as we've had. So I can't wait to raise this more funds to see more lights in in combination with future programming around the holidays.
Yeah, so we do have a list there. I believe it's on the next slide. You can see the list of all of the donors. Actually, maybe one more slide that have supported the winter project to this to this point. Actually, I dropped off our check from Prospect Meadows today, so we add that to the list. We want to give a special shout out to Mayor Nick for his support in gathering additional $4,000 to this year's display. And I think the the list of donors to this point really showcases the fact that it's a lot, large-scale community involvement with from all four corners of the city of Marion to support the project, so.
And so far, as of just about a week ago, our class had raised $42,000 to go toward purchasing new lights, but with Steve's donation, I right now, I'm going to be writing a check for $100 from my family, from the Shepherd family in Marion, that we are going to be hopefully purchasing new March and market, new lights in March at a discount. So we do request for a city council match not to exceed $6,000. Do you have any questions that you need to answer before you make a decision? We're happy to answer anything, any question.
Questions?
All right. Well, if there are no questions, we we really thank you for your time and consideration and really hope everyone has a happy and safe holiday season. And we I think everyone is looking forward to flipping the calendar to to 2021 and hopefully get a fresh start on.
Thank you all for your efforts and on this great project. And we look forward to seeing even more lights next year and years to come. So thank you for your part in that. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda, we have a presentation regarding the Marion disaster recovery grants, and that's Jill Ackerman with the Marion Chamber.
Hey, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you for just a minute or two tonight. I do want to make one clarification with our winter lights presentation. I heard 42,000, but I saw on the screen 4,200 or thereabouts. And in case anybody's just listening to the audio, I want to make sure that everyone heard it's we've raised $4,200 to date, not 42,000. So I wish it was 42,000. That would be great. But moving on, I thought they did a great job. One thing about Marion Leadership in Action, we have gone to a virtual setting, which is unfortunate, because one of the really cool parts of that program is when those groups get to get to meet together and build those personal relationships with other community members. I think there's huge value in that, and we just haven't really been able to to do that this year. So but we have made plans to incorporate this year's class into many of our next year's class activities. So when we go out and do things like tours of city facilities or networking events, things like that, they'll be able to participate in those. So that's just a little about about Marion Leadership in Action. I don't know, Rachel, if you have the documents that I sent on slides. But if not, I
I just have the first page of the grant.
Okay, I think I can might. Oh, I can't. It says I can't share my screen. That's okay. I know that the council has a copy of our kind of high-level overview of our annual report. And I just wanted to mention a couple of things on there that relate to this derecho disaster grant. Quickly, when COVID-19 started, we really switched kind of switched up our strategic plan, and we focused on three main things: stimulating the local economy, advocating for business, and continuing to build valuable community assets. So on the second section of that one-page report, you'll see a section called Outreach and Recovery. And I just wanted to point out really those those numbers, those are kind of some of our key key data points that we collected throughout the year. Even with COVID-19 and during the derecho, we still were able to complete 30 networking opportunities or events. We moved a lot of those to an online platform. We did 15 COVID assistance webinars. We had 4,500 members on our delivery curbside and carryout Facebook page. We did $20,500 worth of community cash that was infused into the community with specific derecho response. In about 12 days, we had, we logged 1,100 volunteer hours at that, just at the food pantry alone. So if you think about that and you think about all of the groups that were coming into our community from really all over the United States, I I can't imagine how staggering that number would be. In addition to that, through that temporary pantry, we served about 1,600 households. So usually, they are serving about 100 a week. So that was just a really huge number. And we spoke to a lot of folks that that had never used a pantry, a food pantry before, and they had lost, you know, everything. Of course, we all pretty much lost all of our food and and they were able to use the food pantry during that time. So that was a big deal. Moving on specifically to the Marion Recovery Grants, though, in your packets, you'll see a copy of the application pretty quickly. I would say within one to two days, so probably around August 11th or August 12th, after the derecho hit, we were getting calls from folks on the hotline, where can I send money? Where can I send money? So we immediately set up the foundation account. And we set up a separate account called the Marion Chamber Foundation Disaster Recovery Fund. And we started collecting money, money in that account. And we weren't even sure what it was going to be used for when we first set it up. We quickly decided that it would be used for used for supporting residents and businesses who experienced storm damage, which was pretty much everyone. And then to help people with food insecurity and to help recover Marion's tree canopy. So those are kind of the three focuses of this derecho disaster grant fund. But now, you know, since we've gone through this, we'll always have the Disaster Recovery Fund set up. So God forbid, if anything like this were to ever happen again, we have the infrastructure in place and we're able to collect collect those funds. So if you move down to the application itself, it lists kind of the the criteria for who who could apply for one of these grants. You have to be a Marion resident. You have to be current on all your local and federal taxes or assessments. You have to have an approvable loss. It's not limited to loss of structure, loss of residential contents, loss of vehicle, and have a, it must be a loss that's not completely covered by insurance. So this could cover deductibles that you can't afford. And you you can't have enough cash on hand in order to make up those losses. And the criteria is very similar for for the business sector. Moving on to the third page of the application, you kind of get into the the details, the name of the person or the business. We want them to describe the loss and provide documentation. So insurance filings, any FEMA documentation that they have makes a better application. But we tried to make it as simple and as short as we possibly could. And they have to initial a couple of things. There's an affidavit on the back. You know, basically certifying that they're they are telling the, you know, the the truth about their situation. And we had a lot of guidance from both Scott Swenson at the SBDC and Teresa Bornback. And both of those people did a lot of flood work in 2008. And so we're very familiar with these application processes and said, you know, you got to keep this application as simple as you can. So they are also serving on our Grant Review Committee, and I want to all of the help that they've they've given us. They've been great sounding boards. And then I also want to recognize Laura Campbell from Marion Cares. Wendy Fries is an administrator in the Cedar Rapids School District, but a Marion resident. And Beth Nelson is a teacher at Lynnmar, and Derek Jensen is a Rockwell employee. The last three that I mentioned were pretty much full-time volunteers at the pantry. They showed up every single day and worked a full eight-hour day at the pantry. So it was awesome, too, having educators at the pantry, because a lot of them knew the families that were coming in to be served. And so that was very helpful. As far as the grants go, we have round one, we're wrapping that up right now. We had 24 applicants. Five of those applicants were businesses and the rest were residents. And, excuse me, we saw, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of people that still need help. There's a lot of conversations still happening with their with insurance companies. One of the situations that we have seen that's maybe a kind of a struggle is some folks that live in the mobile home parks. They, it's not that they don't want to have insurance because of the age of their mobile homes. They are not insurable. And so they're having trouble, you know, coming up with at least half of the money that they need to do their repairs. So you know, this funding is is proving to be very helpful, helpful to them, because many of them still have holes in their roofs. They're missing skirting off their trailer, which is a critical piece of infrastructure for a mobile home. It's part of the insulation system during the winter months. It's really important. Some of them have damage to their floors, windows out, all sorts of things. So like I said, we've gotten through round one. We sent out the first five checks today. In the first round, we'll give out about $19,500. And there's probably about 25,000 to 30,000 left in there. And the 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 second round has been announced. The Grant Committee will be meeting at the at the beginning of January, and we'll get the second round out. I don't think we will. I think we'll have so many people in the second round that we won't be able to do a third round, because the the funds will be expended. But I'm seeing a lot more business applications this go around. So the mayor had asked me to do an update. So there's sort of an update of the Disaster Recovery Grants. And does anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Jill? Yes, go ahead, Greg.
Yeah, Jill. What's the total level of funding that is available at this point in time?
So we started out, we had about $55,000, and we've given away about 20 of that. So actually, about we'll have about 35,000 left. We collect, in total, we collected around 75,000. And you'll remember that we gave $10,000 to Trees Forever. We gave $10,000 to the Marion Food Pantry. And we've got some other, some other funding that we that we sent out. We actually had to buy a lot of food for the food pantry when we first started, so.
Yeah, I recall that. Well, thank you for the great effort on this. And as you said, it's a permanent program now, and hopefully it's one that we don't ever have to use.
I hope I hope not either.
And the money that went to Trees Forever was for seed money for a fund specifically for replanting Marion trees.
Right. I think they plan to do some kind of tree sale for sure in the spring. We'll be working on details of that with them, but that'll give residents an opportunity to buy trees at a, you know, perhaps a fraction of the cost that they might normally have to pay.
Okay. Any other questions for Jill? Thank you, Jill. And thank you to you and your small but mighty team for all the things that you do that really impact our lives here in Marion. So thank you.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Same to you. Okay, at this time, we have a public forum, which is a section on the on the agenda that is set aside for comments from the public on any topic that is listed on the agenda but not associated with a public hearing. If any comment is associated with a public hearing, there will be time during the public hearing for those comments. So at this time, we'll take any comments from the public on any item on the agenda but not associated with a public hearing. Do you have anyone who has asked to speak or sent in a comment?
I have not received any.
Okay. We'll wait just a minute to see if anyone is sending a message. Okay. We'll move on with the agenda. The Consent Agenda, Mr. Harper.
Yes, Your Honor, I move to approve the Consent Agenda consisting of items A1 through F6, which spans Resolutions 29069 through 29084.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve the Consent Agenda as presented, including items A1 through F6 and Resolutions 29069 through 29084. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion is approved. For the next section, I will turn over the meeting to the Mayor pro tem.
Your Honor, I move to approve the Consent Agenda with Mayor Abosley's abstention as follows. Items D1 through F3, Resolutions 29085 through 29089.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to approve the Consent Agenda with Mayor Abosley's abstention. Items D1 through F3, Resolutions 29085 through 29089. Are there, is there any discussion on any of these items? If not, all those in favor of approving this Consent Agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The Consent Agenda is approved with one abstention. I'll move the meeting back to the mayor.
Okay, at this time, we have the regular agenda, Administrative Services.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 29090, approving a contract with Darktrace Limited.
It's removed and seconded to approve Resolution Number 29090, approving the contract with Darktrace Limited. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I make a motion to receive and file an application for tax increment financing assistance from Green Park Apartment Living LLC.
Second.
It moved and seconded to receive and file an application for tax increment financing from Green Park Apartment Living. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved. I will turn over the meeting to the Mayor pro tem for the next four items.
Your Honor, I make a motion to direct staff to draft a memorandum memorandum of understanding with Green Park Apartment Living LLC regarding tax increment financing incentives.
Second.
So we got a motion and a second for the, to direct staff to draft, to draft a memorandum of understanding with Green Park Apartment Living. Is there any, is there a presentation on this?
Thank you, Your Honor. The city has received a request from Green Park Apartment Living. This is a corporation that intends to redevelop the existing YMCA site with multifamily housing, and they have requested city assistance to cover the financial gap. This is an area that is in the central corridor, urban renewal area. The site has been identified as a brownfield.
Are there any questions by the council? Are there any questions by the council? Okay. All those in favor of approving the motion to direct staff to draft this MOU, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The motion is approved with one abstention.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve resolution number two-nine-zero-nine-one, approving partial payment number four to Wendling Quarry Incorporated for final disposition of storm debris in the amount of one-hundred-and-five-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents.
Second.
So we got a motion and a second to approve resolution number two-nine-zero-nine-one regarding payment number four to Wendling Quarries. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving resolution number two-nine-zero-nine-one, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved with one abstention.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve resolution number two-nine-zero-nine-two, approving partial payment number five to Wendling Quarries Incorporated for final disposition of storm debris in the amount of one-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents.
Second.
So we got a motion and a second to approve resolution number two-nine-zero-nine-two for partial payment number five to Wendling Quarries. Discussion. All those in favor of approving resolution number two-nine-zero-nine-two, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved with one abstention.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number two-nine-zero-nine-three, approving discoping agreement between City of Marion and Thompson Consulting Services.
Second.
And we got a motion and a second to approve resolution number two-nine-zero-nine-three regarding an agreement between the City of Marion and Thompson Consulting Services. Discussion. All those in favor of approving resolution number two-nine-zero-nine-three, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved with one abstention. And I'll move the meeting back to the mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number two-nine-zero-nine-four, approving partial payment number five to Southern Disaster Recovery LLC for emergency debris removal services in the amount of one million five-hundred-seventy-eight-thousand-two-hundred-twenty dollars and twenty-three cents.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two-nine-zero-nine-four, approving partial payment number five to Southern Disaster Recovery LLC for emergency debris removal services in the amount of one million five-hundred-seventy-eight-thousand-two-hundred-twenty dollars and twenty-three cents. Discussion. All those in favor of approving resolution number two-nine-zero-nine-four, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number two-nine-zero-nine-five, approving addendum number two to the contract with Southern Disaster Recovery LLC for the storm debris removal services.
Second. It has been moved by Councilmember Brant, seconded by Councilmember Sternad to approve resolution number two-nine-zero-nine-five, approving addendum number two to the contract with Southern Disaster Recovery LLC for storm debris removal services. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I make a motion directing staff to solicit bids for debris collection and vegetative reduction operations associated with the emergency waterway debris removal project.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to direct staff to solicit bids for debris collection and vegetative reduction operations associated with the emergency waterways debris removal project. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number two-nine-zero-nine-six, approving the purchase of furnishings for the new fire station number one headquarters in the amount of one-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two-nine-zero-nine-six, approving the purchase of furnishings for the new fire station number one headquarters in the amount of one-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents. I believe Chief Kable wanted to address the council on this item. So we can, that and then take questions and discussion. Chief, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Your Honor, I want to take the quick opportunity, I was told that there needed to be an update on the new station. So I wanted to take the opportunity tonight, since this is the last council meeting of 2020. We were supposed to be occupying our building the end of this month, so I wanted to give a quick explanation of why we will not be occupying the new building at the end of this month. There were some delays, as everyone knows, due to COVID. There were contractors ill, contractors had to isolate. So the contractor did ask for more time be given to them. Also, due to the derecho, the damage was quite substantial to the building. So there, there have also been delays in the material delivery. Next slide, please. A quick budget update, we have spent less than fifty percent of our budget, so that remains to be in good standing. Next slide. The original completion date was December thirty-first, 2020. The new final completion date will be April twenty-eighth, 2021, due to the, the delays that I have just shared. The exterior, though, some of the materials will not be here by the twenty-eighth of April. So they have asked for May seventh, 2021, just for the exterior and the landscaping. So that's where we're at. Next slide, please. So I just ask, next slide. I, I just ask for everyone's patience. Patience is a virtue, and I, I've taught myself to remain calm, and there's a reason. There's always a reason for a delay, and we just need to accept that. And that's the way it is. So does anyone have any questions for me about the new station?
Yes, Steve does.
Yeah, Chief, because we've got this delay and because we're going to be seeing more construction through this winter season, is there going to be any cost impact for either one of those reasons?
No, they have not indicated any cost increases due to those reasons.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for the chief? Okay, well, thank you for your leadership on that project, Chief Kable.
Your Honor.
Any discussion on the resolution number two-nine-zero-nine-six? Okay, we'll vote. All those in favor of resolution number two-nine-zero-nine-six, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number two-nine-zero-nine-seven, approving agreement with Heartland Roofing Siding and Windows LLC for McGowan House Roof Repair in the amount of eleven-thousand-six-hundred dollars.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two-nine-zero-nine-seven, approving the agreement with Heartland Roofing Siding and Windows LLC for the McGowan House Roof Repair in the amount of eleven-thousand-six-hundred dollars. Discussion. Were there any other, was there any other damage to the house besides the roof repair?
Yeah, there was some damage to the railings on the ADA ramp and some of the, obviously, the tree came over and did some damage to the site and the facilities. I think that the garage is going to need a little bit of work on the roof as well.
Okay. That was an amazing tree. Okay. Any questions or discussion on this item? All those in favor of approving resolution number two-nine-zero-nine-seven, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. Next item is a continuation of a public hearing regarding Marion Public Library's new building project for, do I, do I need to run down these?
No, I'm Ryan Dean with Bush Construction's on the line, I can, I can speak on it.
Okay, one, one second, but when I read the motion, or the should I, I'll just do it. This, this has been continued from December third, 2020, and will be closed today, this public hearing. The public hearing is regarding the new building project, decorative metal, general trades, glass and glazing, the flooring, food service equipment, conveying systems, fire suppression, electrical, HVAC, painting, plumbing, roofing and architectural sheet metal, masonry, and gypsum board and acoustic ceilings. Okay, sir, please proceed with the presentation.
I appreciate it. This is Ryan Dean with Bush Construction. Appreciate everyone's time and the opportunity to share the results of the bid release, too, for the Marion Public Library. As you all may know, the first bid release was completed back in September, and work on site pertaining to this bid release is currently underway. We had fourteen bid packages, which you just read off there, thank you. As part of our post-bid follow-up process with these fourteen bid packages, we met with each trade listed to ensure the contract documents have been met. Our intentions with them were positive. Before I go into each bid tab individually, I'd like to acknowledge that our overall project totals fell approximately five-hundred thousand under our target of eighteen million. You will notice that a few of our low contractors are over our initial fifty percent design budgets. However, if you look at the project as a whole, we are pleased with the outcomes. Now we're getting into each bid package here. Bid package zero-four-B unit masonry contained the exterior brick veneer and cast-stone copings. We received three bids with low ba, with the low base bid price being six-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars. We recommend Seedorf Masonry be awarded and contracted for this bid package. Bid package zero-five-B miscellaneous steel contained loose steel lintels and steel framing for stairs that were not yet designed as part of bid release one. We received one bid with the low base bid price being ninety-four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy dollars. We recommend Peak Construction be awarded and contract, contracted for this bid pack. Next slide, please. Bid package zero-six-A, general trades, which contained rough carpentry, exterior railings, architectural millwork, spray insulation behind the exterior brick facades, door and frames, visual display units, signage, toilet specialties, and roller window shades. As you can see there, we had six bids, which contained alternate number one, which was the additional access control, alternate number two, which was the insulation at the snowmelt system, and a unit price for signage. The low base bid plus the alternate prices is one-million-two-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty dollars. We recommend Peak Construction be awarded and contracted for this bid package. Bid package zero-seven-A roofing and sheet metal contained roofing membrane, paper tile system at the roof terrace and roof-related sheet metal. We received four bids with the low base bid price of three-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand-two-hundred dollars. We recommend Blackhawk Roof Company be awarded and contracted for this bid package. Next slide, please. Bid package zero-eight-A, glass and glazing contained aluminum-framed entrances and storefronts, aluminum windows and interior glass systems. We received, we received three bids, which contain costs associated to alternate number one, which was the additional access controls. The low base bid price plus the alternance was five-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars. We recommend Zephyr Aluminum be awarded and contracted for this bid. Bid package zero-nine-A gypsum board contained non-structural metal framing, gypsum board, acoustical ceiling tiles and sound-absorbing wall units. We received six bids, which contain costs associated to alternate number four, which were the youth department ceilings in addition to the base bid. The low base bid price plus the alternance was one-million-one-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-one-hundred-and-six dollars. We recommend Pearson Wall Systems be awarded and contracted for this bid package. Next slide, please. Bid package zero-nine-B flooring contained ceramic tile, resilient flooring and carpet tile. We officially received one bid with the low base bid price of three-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty dollars. We recommend Commercial Flooring Company be awarded and contracted for this bid pack. Bid package zero-nine-C painting contained minor exterior paint and interior paint throughout. We received four bids, which contain costs associated with alternate number one, additional access control in addition to the base bid. The low base bid plus alternates was ninety-four-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars. We recommend corridor paint and drywall be awarded and contracted for this bid. Next slide, please. Bid package eleven-A food service equipment contained equipment at the demonstration kitchen. We received two bids with the low base bid price of fifty-four-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars. We recommend Rapids Food Service Contract and Design be awarded and contracted for this bid. Bid package fourteen-A conveying systems contained two separate elevators throughout the building. We officially received one bid with the low base bid price of two-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand-six-hundred dollars. We recommend Conai Inc. be awarded and contracted for this bid back. Next slide, please. Bid package twenty-one-A fire suppression contained the fire sprinkler throughout the building. We received five bids with a low base bid price of one-hundred-and-one-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty dollars. We recommend Ahearn Fire Protection be awarded and contracted for this bid package. Bid package twenty-two-A and twenty-three-A combined, which contained plumbing and HVAC throughout the building. We received eight bids, which contain costs associated with alternate number two, the snowmelt at the north entrance in addition to the base bid. The low base bid price plus alternates was two-million-three-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. We recommend Pipe Pro Inc. be awarded and contracted for this bid package. Next slide, please. Bid package twenty-six-A contained the electrical scope throughout the building. We received four bids, which contained alternate number one, additional access control, alternate number two, electrical at the snowmelt system, and alternate number three, additional light fixtures in addition to the base bid. The low base bid price plus the alternates was one-million-six-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars. We recommend Acme Electric be awarded and contracted for this bid package. Next slide, if you have it. Okay, that wraps up the slides that I intended on sharing, but I wanted to note the resolutions that are on the agenda tonight. We've got a priority group of contractors associated with the bid packets just mentioned that are needed on-site sooner rather than later. So you'll notice a handful of contractors that we are asking for approval of contract and bond in addition to accepting bids and awarding contract. We will follow up with the remaining contractors for approval of contract and bond in future council meetings. And that kind of wraps up my spiel. I appreciate everybody's time, and I'm open for questions as needed.
Sorry, my microphone was off. Thank you, Mr. Dean. If there are any members of the public who have asked to comment either in favor or in opposition to any of the bid packages that have been presented, this is the time to do so, and the last opportunity, opportunity to do so, as the public hearing will now be closed after this meeting. Do we have anyone who has asked to speak?
I have not received any comments.
Okay. While we wait to see if anyone is trying to reach us electronically, we'll ask the staff if they've received any comments outside this meeting. Is Kelly with us?
Yes.
Have you received any comments?
No, we have not received any questions or comments at the library.
Okay, and Mike Barkalow, are you with us? Did you receive any comments?
I have not, but after discussing with legal, we are going to ask city council to table item E-ten and E-eighteen.
Okay. All right, we'll take care of that when we get to those items. Thanks for alerting us to that. But you have not received any comments. But you have not received any comments from, uh, the public outside this meeting then, um, has anyone tried to contact us during this meeting?
I have not received any.
Okay, please note for the record that we have not received comments from the public. Uh. On this public hearing matter. At this time, we will close the public hearing. And proceed with the, uh, agenda items for the approvals. That are, uh, requested.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number two-nine-zero-nine-eight, accepting bids and awarding contract to Cedar Masonry regarding the Marion Library Building Project. Uh, BP zero four B unit masonry in the amount of six hundred fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Second. It has been moved and seconded. To approve resolution number two-nine-zero-nine-eight, accepting bids and awarding the contract to Cedar Masonry. For the Public Library Project. Unit masonry, uh, contract in the amount of six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number two-nine-zero-nine-nine, accepting bids. And awarding contract to Peak Construction. Regarding the Marion Library Building Project BP O-five B. Decorative metal and BP O-six A. General trades in the amount. Of one million, three hundred twenty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two-nine-zero-nine-nine. Accepting bids and awarding the contract to Peak Construction. For the Library Project Decorative Metal. And general trades contracts in the amount of one million, three hundred twenty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number two-nine-one-zero-zero, accepting bids and awarding contract to Blackhawk Roofing. Regarding the Marion Library prod, Building Project BP zero seven A Roofing and Architectural Sheet Metal in the amount of three hundred and seventy-three thousand, two hundred dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two-nine-one-zero-zero. Accepting bids and awarding the contract. To Blackhawk Roofing. For the Library Project Roofing and Architectural Sheet Metal. In the amount of three hundred and seventy-three thousand, two hundred dollars. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number two-nine-one-zero-one, accepting bids and awarding contract to Zephyr Aluminum. Regarding the Marion Library Building Project BP zero eight A Glass and Glazing in the amount of five hundred eighty thousand, five hundred seventy-four dollars.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two-nine-one-zero-one, accepting the bids and awarding the contract to Zephyr Aluminum. For the Library Project Glass and Glazing. In the amount of eight hundred and, five hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars. It's an amount of five hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, make a motion to approve resolution number two-nine-one-zero-two, accepting bids and awarding contract to Pearson Wall Systems regarding the Marion Library Building. Project BP zero-nine A Gypsum Board and Acoustic Ceilings in the amount of one million, one hundred and seventeen thousand, one hundred and six dollars.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two-nine-one-zero-two, accepting bids and awarding the contract to Pearson Wall Systems. For the Library Project Gypsum Board and Acoustic Ceilings. In the amount of one million, one hundred seventeen thousand, one hundred and six dollars. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number two-nine-one-zero-three. Accepting bids and awarding contract to Commercial Flooring. Regarding the Marion Library Building Project BP zero-nine B Flooring. In the amount of three hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two-nine-one-zero-three. Accepting bids and awarding the contract to Commercial Flooring. For the Marion Library Project Flooring. In the amount of three hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number two-nine-one-zero-four, accepting bids and awarding contract to Corridor Paint and Drywall. Regarding the Marion Library Pro, Building Project BP zero-nine C Painting in the amount of ninety-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two-nine-one-zero-four, accepting bids and awarding contract. To con, Corridor Paint and Drywall for the Marion Library Project Painting in the amount of ninety-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number two-nine-one-zero-five, accepting bids and awarding contract. To Rapids Food Service regarding the Marion Library Building Project. BP eleven A Food Service Equipment. In the amount of fifty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two-nine-one-zero-five, accepting bids and awarding the contract to Rapids Food Service. For the Marion Library Building Project. Food Service Equipment in the amount of fifty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number two-nine-one-zero-six, accepting bids and awarding contract to Cone Incorporated regarding the Marion Library Building Project BP. One-four A Conveying System. In the amount of two hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred dollars.
Second.
Uh, yes, go ahead.
Your Honor, this is one of the resolutions that we had recommended tabling.
Yeah.
For this evening, um, the issue is that, um, late in the day today, we received a writer from this company that they would like us to attach to the contract. And I have not had sufficient time to ensure that that does not substantially change any of the terms. Or that it wouldn't have given them an unfair advantage that was not given to anyone else who may have been discouraged from submitting a bid on this. Um, and additionally, council has not had the opportunity to review the contract with that writer in it as well. So, um, for that reason, we're asking that this be tabled and, um, as a point of clarification. This one does have both the accepting bids and awarding contract and the approval of the contract on the, the agenda for tonight, but this is not one of the priority contractors. Um, I confirmed with Mr. Dean earlier today that there would be no harm done if we delay the approval of this contract or were this bid out for. Another session so that we can kind of reconcile those terms in their writer.
Okay, appreciate the information and, um. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there a motion to table?
Mayor, I move to table resolution number. Two-nine-one-zero-six, accepting bids and awarding contract to Cone Inc. Regarding the Marion Library Building Project BP fourteen A. Conveying Systems in the amount of two hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by council member, by Mayor Portem Jensen, seconded by Council Member Brandt. To table resolution number two-nine-one-zero-six. Is there any discussion on the motion to table? Okay, we'll vote on the motion to table. All those in favor of tabling resolution number two-nine-one-zero-six. Please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Okay, the motion is approved and resolution number two-nine-one-zero-six is, uh, tabled to a later date. Uh, just a quick question, uh, for the city attorney. You also mentioned E eighteen, uh, do, does that, uh, do we need to make the motion and then table it or, or can it just be pulled off the agenda?
Who could pull that one off of the agenda?
Okay, um, it might be simpler than going through the process of making the motion and tabling it. But if you wanted to, at that time, do an explanation like you did for E ten, please, you know, look, do that. Okay.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve resolution number two-nine-one-zero-seven, accepting bids and awarding contract to. Ahern Fire Protection regarding the Marion Library Building Project BP two-one A Fire Suppression in the amount of. One hundred and one thousand dollars, three, one hundred and one thousand dollars, three hundred and thirty. Let me say that again, one hundred and one, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. To approve resolution number two-nine-one-zero-six, accepting bids and awarding contract to. I'm sorry, two-nine-one-zero-seven. Resolution number two-nine-one-zero-seven, accepting bids and awarding a contract to Ahern Fire Protection. For the Marion Library Project Fire Suppression. In the amount of one hundred and one thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor of approving resolution number two-nine-one-zero-seven, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number two-nine-one-zero-eight, accepting bids and awarding contract to Pipe Pro. Regarding the Marion Library Building Project BP. Two-two A Plumbing and two-three A HVAC in the amount of two million, three hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two-nine-one-zero-eight. Accepting bids and awarding contract to Pipe Pro. For the Marion Library Project Plumbing and HVAC in the amount of two million, three hundred thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor of resolution number two-nine-one-zero-eight, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I moved to approve resolution number two-nine-one-zero-nine, accepting bids and awarding contract to Acme Electric. Regarding the Marion Library Building Project BP twenty-six A Electrical. In the amount of one million, six hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two-nine-one-zero-nine, accepting bids and awarding contract. To Acme Electric. For the Marion Library Project Electrical. In the amount of one million, six hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor of resolution number two-nine-one-zero-nine, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number two-nine-one-one-zero, approving contract and bond with Cedar Masonry, Masonry for the unit masonry associated with the Marion Library Building Project BP zero-four B. In the amount of six hundred seventy-five thousand, seven hundred thirty-three dollars.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two-nine-one-one-zero. Approving the contract and bond with Cedar Masonry. For the unit masonry. Associated with the Marion Public Library Project in the amount of six hundred seventy-five thousand, seven hundred thirty-three dollars. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor of resolution two-nine-one-one-zero, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number two-nine-one-one-one, approving contract and bond. With Peak Construction for the General Trades and Miscellaneous Steel. Associated with the Marion Library Building Project BP zero-six A. And BP zero-five A in the amount. Of one million, three hundred twenty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars.
Second. It has been moved by Mayor Portem Jensen, seconded by Council Member Sternad. To approve resolution number two-nine-one-one-one. Approving the contract and bond with Peak Construction for the General Trades and Miscellaneous Steel associated with the Marion Library Project. In the amount of one million, three hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. Discussion. All those in favor of resolution two-nine-one-one-one, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number. Two-nine-one-one-two, approving contracted bond with Blackhawk Roofing for the roofing and architectural sheet metal associated with the Marion Library. Building Project BP zero-seven A in the amount of three hundred and thirty, three hundred seventy-three thousand, two hundred dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two-nine-one-one-two. Approving the contract and bond with Blackhawk Roofing. For the Roofing and Architectural Sheet Metal. For the Marion Library Project in the amount of three hundred and seventy-three thousand, two hundred dollars. Discussion. All those in favor of resolution number two-nine-one-one-two, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number two-nine-one-one-three, approving contract and bond with Zephyr Aluminum for the glass and glazing associated with the Marion Library Building Project BP zero-eight A. In the amount of five hundred eighty thousand, five hundred seventy-four dollars.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two-nine-one-one-three, approving the contract and bond with Zephyr Aluminum. For the glass and glazing. For the Marion Library Project in the amount of five hundred and eighty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars. Discussion. All those in favor of resolution number two-nine-one-one-three, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. The next item, E eighteen, resolution number two-nine-one-one-four. By request of the staff, has been removed from the agenda for the time being and we'll see it on a future agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is the contract that goes with the, uh, award and the, um. The bid that we chose to table until the next council meeting or until further meeting. Um, without awarding the, the bid and we can't really approve the contract. And I would just like some additional time to be able to review that writer again and make sure that it's something that we can even accept at this point in time that it wouldn't be. Iowa Code twenty-six. Um, and I haven't had the, the chance to talk to them either to find out whether or not this is a deal breaker and they would then withdraw their bid, so. Um, just for some extra time, otherwise we anticipate that this will be back on the agenda at the next session.
Okay, was that clear for everyone? Anyone have a question or point of clarification or anything? Okay. Then we'll move on to number E nineteen.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number two-nine-one-one-five, approving contract and bond with Ahern Fire Protection for the fire suppression associated with. The Marion Library Building Project BP twenty-one A in the amount of one hundred and one thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two-nine-one-one-five, approving the contract and bond with Ahern. Uh, Fire Protection for the Fire Suppression. Uh, associated with the Marion Library Project in the amount of one hundred and one thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion to approve resolution number two-nine-one-one-five, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number two-nine-one-one-six. Approving contract and bond with Pipe Pro for the plumbing and HVAC system. Associated with the Marion Library Building Project BP twenty-two A and twenty-three A. In the amount of two million, three hundred thirty-two thousand, eight hundred seventy-five dollars.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two-nine-one-one-six. Approving the contract and bond with Pipe Pro. For the plumbing and HVAC associated with the library project. In the amount of two million, three hundred thirty-two thousand, eight hundred seventy-five dollars. Discussion. All those in favor of resolution two-nine-one-one-six, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number two nine one one seven, approving contract and bond with Acme Electric for the Electrical associated with the Marion Library Building Project BP twenty-six A Electrical in the amount of one million, six hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, three hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two nine one one seven, approving the contract and bond with Acme Electrical, Electric for the Electrical associated with the Marion Library Project in the amount of one million, six hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor of resolution number two nine one one seven, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the project calendar for the Formed Metal Wall Panels associated with the Marion Library Building Projects as follows, Resolutions two nine one one eight through two nine one two zero.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar for the Formed Metal Wall Panels, so it's associated with the Marion Library Building Project, including Resolution two nine one one eight, approving a resolution of necessity for the Formed Metal Wall Panels. Resolution two nine one one nine, ordering preparation of detailed plans, specifications, notice of hearing and letting, notice to bidders, form of contract and estimate, estimate of cost regarding the Formed Metal Wall Panels. Resolution two nine one two zero, approving and adopting final plans, specifications, notice of hearing and letting, notice to bidders, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the Formed Metal Wall Panels. Discussion on this resolution. On the motion. Okay, all those in favor of approving the motion to approve the project calendar for the Formed Metal Wall Panels for the Marion Library Project including Resolutions two nine one one eight through two nine one two zero, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved. At this time, we have a public hearing regarding the Library Building Project Formed Metal Wall Panels. The public hearing is now open. Who has the presentation?
Yeah, this is Ryan again with Bush Construction. So bid package zero seven B Metal Wall Panels contained a concealed metal fastener metal wall panel system and framing system behind the panels. We received two bids with a low base bid price of two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. We recommend East Moline Sheet Metal be awarded and contracted for.
Okay, thank you for the presentation. If you would stay with us in case there's a question when we get to the resolution portion. At this time, the meeting is available for any members of the public to participate in the public hearing and comment either in favor or in opposition to this measure. Do we have any members of the public who have asked to speak?
I have not received any comments.
Okay, and we'll ask the staff again if any comments have been received outside of this meeting for the public hearing.
We have not received any at the library, your honor.
Thank you.
We have not either, your honor.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone?
No one's contacted.
Trying to contact us right now, okay. All right, seeing that there are no public comments, we'll note that for the public record and close the public hearing and move on to the resolution.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number two nine one two one, accepting bids and awarding contract to East Moline Sheet Metal regarding the Marion Library Building Project BP zero seven B Formed Metal Wall Panels in the amount of two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two nine one two one, accepting bids and awarding the contract to East Moline Sheet Metal for the Marion Library Project Formed Metal Wall Panels in the amount of two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. Any discussion? Questions for Mr. Dean? Okay, all those in favor of resolution number two nine one two one, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
May I move to approve resolution number two nine one two two, approving agreement with Don and Kathy Kenson Singer regarding the sanitary sewer connection fee at four three five five, twenty-ninth Avenue.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two nine one two two, approving the agreement with Don and Kathy Kensonger regarding the sanitary sewer connection fee for forty-three fifty-five, twenty-ninth Avenue. Discussion. All those in favor of resolution number two nine one two two, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Your honor, I move to approve resolution number two nine one two three, approving change order number six with Peterson Contractors Incorporated regarding the Seymour Phase Three Project in the city of Marion from Marion Boulevard Bridge over Indian Creek North to preservation of Trail Bridge over Indian Creek Bridge New. Steel girder in the amount of one hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Second.
Okay, before we proceed, I need to turn this over to the Mayor Pro Tem along with the next four items.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second to approve resolution number two nine one two three for the change order number six with Peterson Contractors regarding the Seymour, Seymour Phase Three Project. We had a good presentation on this on Tuesday. You want to go through that very briefly for other people that may be watching this meeting tonight, Mike?
Sure, so what we're talking about is the existing railroad bridge that goes over creek. We found when we went to start drilling into the existing substructure or foundation that the concrete was hollow, and so we looked at three different options. Basically, option one is to remove at least fifteen inches of the existing substructure and replace it. Option two is to add a new cap around the existing structure, and option three was to completely demolish it and construct a new here. The life cycle for each one goes, option one is the least lifespan, two is medium, and three is the longest. So with that, if we went with option one, which was the cheapest option, we end up going with option three anyways. And with it not being that much more expensive and with life and safety being paramount, staff has chose to go with option three, and we got numbers from the contractor, and they were actually a little lower than the engineer's estimate, so we're recommending that we proceed with this change order. This does put us a little overestimate, but we'll shift some of the Seymour funds around for the future phases in order to pay for this.
Thank you for answering that question. I think that was probably going to be one that we didn't talk on Tuesday about how we were going to fund that. Okay, does anybody have any questions for Mike regarding this resolution and this change in the project? Okay, if not, all those in favor of approving resolution number two nine one two three, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved with one abstention. Okay, we now have a public hearing regarding an amendment to the Marion Future Land Use Map of the Marion Comprehensive Plan from Single Family Detached Residential to Multi-Family Residential for property located east of Alvernet Road Extended. And this is brought by Midwest Development Company. The public hearing is now open. Tom, could you give us a presentation on this, please?
Yes, so the, the item before us this evening is a public hearing regarding the Future Land Use Map Amendment. And as illustrated, there is a change from, from the previous land use, which was some duplex units east of Alvernet Road in the red area identified to, and there's a desire to change that to the multifamily structures, which were seven, ten-unit multifamily buildings that are east of Alvernet Road. And so the, the, the slide on the, on the right lower-hand side identifies there proposed for that, and it would change it to be, to the multifamily designation. I would, I would just point out that there was a very good question on Tuesday related to the property on the west side that is, that is identified for single-family use, but highlighted with the, with the black outline. And the, and the, the curiosity is, because that area is, is actually identified for duplexes, and it's not identified as single-family on the land use map. I had to do a little digging, and I did find out that the, the zoning for this area was, was originally completed prior to the adoption of the new comp plan. So, you know, the zoning was in place prior to the comp plan, and the comp plan, when adopted, did not reflect that zoning, and they were happening at about the same time. So what we've done in the past is, is kind of handled that. At the time a developer proposal is brought forward, there will be a site development plan, I believe, that comes forward with that, and we would either address it with that or, or identify it at some time when that approval would come forward. We would not want to do it in, in the instance of a public hearing in this manner simply because we did not notice it appropriately, but we like to do that at the time a developer proposal would come through, so we clean it up at that point in time. But it's, it's just one of those situations where we had a zoning pre-existing when the comp plan was adopted. So the zoning still holds true, and the development proposal for that property would still hold true. But the item that's on the agenda this evening would be primary, is directed at the land use designation for the property east of Alvernet Road. So the development proposal that the council had seen in the past, as, as the council is aware, this development came forward, and we're talking, I'll just talk a little bit about the preliminary site development plan while we're talking about the overall land area and the development proposal in front of us. The, the project when it came before the council before included in one more building than is proposed now, so they, they heard what the residents had indicated and the council had said, and they removed one building. There's also a portion of the property proposed for development that was in the flood plain that was also removed. If you'll recall from the council meeting, there were a lot of concerns from adjacent neighbors on how the development would impact their property. And the council asked the developers to kind of, to hold a public meeting to really kind of voice, to get their voices heard. They did move forward with that. There was a community meeting held, and I think that did provide an opportunity to answer a number of concerns that were voiced. In addition to that, staff did expand the notice requirements, so we, we've, we've noticed a much greater area than is identified that was originally noticed, and I think, you know, having done that and then the public meeting that the developers held, I think a lot of the details were covered. So the proposal that's being brought forward and, and a, and a resolution associated with this project would be for the seven buildings and, and ten units per building for seventy units. It, it did reduce the density under the revised site from about twelve units down to about ten. And, and so there is a slight reduction in the density that's being proposed. I believe there's one more slide that illustrates the units and in the view shed of the units from the adjacent development. You can see on the right is the, the proposed buildings. On the left, you can see where the red arrows are. That's where the homes that are currently occupied are. The next phase of development that is, it's actually final platted, and there's, there's homes being constructed on what's called Bowstring Drive there. Many of the lots are probably vacant at this point. I, I haven't really driven out there to see, but so there is going to be a row of single-family homes adjacent or between this development proposal and the existing homes, and then if you go further south along Archer Drive where it would connect in with Alvernet Road, there'd be a small triangle of property, and that's where you'd see that, that duplex development that I was speaking of previously. So there is a little, I guess, a slow increase in density as you move from the north side of the property to the south, where you're going from single-family duplex to multifamily. There are a number of criteria established that, that staff reviews against consideration of a project like this, and they're outlined in the staff report. I'd be happy to walk through those if the council feels it's necessary, but I think that I, I think unless there's a desire for me to do that, I wouldn't do that, but if there are positions of the public that would like to hear more about that, I'd be happy to explain it as well. So based on that, the, the planning commission did see the revised proposal. If you'll recall, the previous commission, there was one vote against the project when it went back, and with the changes, it was a unanimous recommendation to move forward to the council, so the planning commission is supportive of the request as identified. If there's any questions specifically regarding the site plan or the proposal, I could answer those. I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
Yeah.
This is a project that we talked about back in June originally, and now it's been revised and has gone through P and Z approval there and is now back at city council. So we'll open the public hearing up to anybody that is in favor of this project. Do we have anybody online? Rachel?
Yes, Jason Stone with Hall and Hall Engineers.
Okay, Jason, go ahead.
Hi, I can speak a little bit to this item as well as some of the others that are coming up. Now, this one, I think in particular, I believe there's probably going to be a little more detail on the next couple of presentations about this development. Like Tom had mentioned, we did have a neighborhood meeting back in August. And prior to that meeting, we had gone through council, and like he had mentioned, it did get, there was, there was not unanimous, unanimous approval, and the last time it went to council, it was denied. Since then, we did meet with the neighbors. We made some changes to the site plan. We did remove a unit to bring some of this, of this site out of the flood plain. Among that, there were a few concerns of some views that the neighbors would see from their homes, and that was kind of illustrated in, and I think the first slide that was on here. They kind of showed the views from some of the existing homes to, towards the development. So we, we believe we've, we've kind of alleviated some of the concerns of the neighbors, kind of illustrating some of those views. And again, I, I don't know if maybe I'm getting too far too ahead right now. Do you want me to keep going, or you want to wait until some of these other, Thomas had a chance to go through some of the other agenda items?
No, we're going to cover it all right now, so go ahead and continue. I think what's important, Jason, is continue to talk about the changes that have been made to alleviate the concerns that the city council had back in June.
Sure. All right, so another concern that was brought up was parking. Some of the residents thought that if there's not ample parking on the site, that there, some people might spill over onto Alvernet Road or into the, into their, along Bowstring Drive. We did add some additional parking. So on top of the, the stalls that we have, I guess I call them just separated from the existing or from the driveways. So there would be the potential for cars to park in driveways among the other stalls we did add. There, one of the concerns was, was too much density, and like I mentioned before, we, we did remove one, one building, so we went from eighty units down to seventy. After we did that, there wasn't, there weren't really a whole lot of concerns from the neighbors after this other revised site plan. As Tom mentioned before, the part of the, there was a portion of the site that was in the, in the flood plain. After we revised the site and removed that building, we did get a majority of the development out of this, out of the flood plain. There is a small portion, I think, on the east side that still remains in the, in the flood plain. But for the most part, I think a lot of it's been, been taken out. And then the big item, I think for the most part, was kind of related to a lot of the neighbors that were at the meeting, is that they were all kind of concerned about traffic. They, the issues were brought up that the, the development's going to generate too much traffic for the site or for the, for Alvernet Road. And Alvernet Road, I And Alvernet Road, I believe, is designed. And Tom, I guess, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's it's 10,000 vehicles. It's considered to be a minor arterial once it does plunge through to the south. So the amount of traffic that this site is going to generate compared to what Alvernet eventually will carry is, I would say, not much at all. Granted, there's going to be some additional traffic before it does get punched through to the south. But for the most part, I I think a lot of the neighbors are more concerned about once Alvernet does connect to the south, that a lot of that traffic coming through their subdivision. I think that's what they're more concerned about as opposed to this multifamily development. But like, like I mentioned before, it is designed to be a minor arterial through the through this subdivision. So I I believe there were some concerns brought up at the last meeting that I believe back in June where multifamily being located in this area wasn't necessarily the best spot for it. We would, we think, you know, being next to a a minor arterial, that this is probably the best spot you could have it. If, I guess, our concern, I guess, would be that if it's if it's not necessarily seen to be a good spot here, I mean, where where would you put it? Being that it's a minor arterial, that's typically where you would locate higher density developments. And then the last item that was brought up at the at the neighborhood meeting was some of the views for the existing homes on the north side of Bowstring Drive. It's just on the left side of that image that's on the on the left. In order to kind of screen some of those views from those existing homes, we did add some additional landscaping along the north property line. So I think a combination of the landscaping on the north and the west side of the site, in addition to the the sixth edition of Bowman Meadows, which is shown on that image as well. That I think that's going to provide ample screening so that the residents won't necessarily see this development from the, I think it's a fourth edition of Bowman Meadows along Bowhunter Drive. Then again, this is this is a development that Skogman has been going through for a number of years. And again, Skogman is is also looking to develop this multifamily pocket as well. So they're not going to necessarily, you know, negatively impact the existing neighbors. In addition, not to mention the Bowman Meadows sixth edition. So I think that was, those are some of the concerns of the neighbors. And if I guess if there's any other questions from staff, I can I can help answer them.
Okay, Jason, if we got questions, we'll answer those when we come to the resolution in the next item. Do you have any other comments?
I do not, no.
Okay, Jason, thank you. Do we have anybody else to speak in favor of this hearing?
Yes, Lauren Hoffman with Hall and Hall.
Lauren, go ahead. Lauren, are you on the line?
Sorry, I was muted. Here I go.
Go ahead.
Yes, good evening. I had two, two things I wanted to add to Jason's discussion points. I guess first off, is is Hunter Skogman here to talk as well? Otherwise, I may be talking something he was going to talk on.
Yes, Hunter is available.
Okay, I I will not mention the thing that he'll talk about then. The only thing I wanted to add then would be, I think during the the initial, the last time this came to council, I believe, for the most part, and Jason hit on it, traffic was the the biggest concern that we we received during the August, the late August neighborhood meetings. I think all in all, there's a lot of confusion from those neighbors. First off, thinking that Archer Drive, if you look at the image in the left here, that they're they thought that Archer Drive was going to conduct up to Alvernet Road and you would have folks from the multifamily tract or parcel getting on Archer Drive and cutting through the neighborhood. That is not the case. Archer Drive is a cul-de-sac and does not conduct to Alvernet Road. And then ju- just the fact of there was just some folks not really pleased about the fact that Alvernet Road, you know, carrying 10,000 vehicles per day at some point is going to punch through. And you know, this project has nothing to do with that. That's been a long range plan that's been dating back to, I believe, the 90s. And so as Jason hit on, if this is not a place for multifamily, I'm not sure where where it would be. We do have a substation, electrical substation that sits immediately north of this. When this was originally plumery platted back, I believe in the early 2000, 2005, I forget the exact date on that. That was really not there at that time. There was some planning going on with it, but it was not really defined. So that kind of warranted some of the changes in use from the duplex, which was previously slated for this area to this multifamily. With that, I will turn it over, talk to you guys. Thanks.
Thank you, Lauren. And I think we have Hunter Skogman on the line. Hunter?
Hear me?
Go ahead.
You got me?
Yes.
Yeah, so I just I just want to take two quick, two quick minutes and just provide some historical context on this. Jason and Lauren touched a little bit. Bowen Meadows was a parcel of land, which was part of a purchase we made in the late 90s. Planning of this 80 acres was completed around 2000, and then we designed this current plat in in 2000. And then around the same time, as Lauren mentioned, the city approved the plan for the for lying to build a substation just north of Bowman Meadow 7. And for us, it was difficult for us to see how people would be comfortable building a brand new home next to this large metal structure. So this caused us to adjust our plans. And then right now, we think market rate rentals are more appropriate due to the lack of saleability for single family homes and really the overall need within the city of Marion for these type of units, based on the market research. Renters will be less affected by the substation because they're not risking their equity and can move with no long term financial impact. And we think these market rate units, which will rent between 1,200 and 1,400 per month, will be actually a nice feeder into the Bowman Meadows neighborhood. And really, it's always been an understanding between cities and developers. Change can be requested as long as it's early enough not to negatively impact the existing homes. So we'll have actually over four, 700 square feet of 700 feet of land, three rows of houses and an elevated collector road between the current homes and the rental units. And every current, as Jason mentioned, every current and future home in Bowman Meadows is it will be a customer of ours. So we have absolutely no interest in negatively affecting the value of the homes we build or the customers we represent. And just quickly, my last point, one of the concerns that was raised was about the impact of housing values. And based on a licensed appraiser who has looked at similar type units within Cedar Rapids, Marion area, there'll be no negative impact to the existing homes. And I would actually argue the multifamily units should have a positive impact on values as these tenants will hopefully become entrenched in the neighborhood and start purchasing homes in the area. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Hunter. Do we have anybody else on the line to speak in favor of this project?
I'm not sure in favor or against, but Terry Shiflett is.
Yeah, this time we'll open it up to anybody else that has any comments. So we have Terry.
Yes, can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for letting me speak. I am one of the homeowners that is on Bowhunter. And I have been to the meetings as well as the attended the city council meeting through Zoom last time. And I'd like to give you just another side or a perspective to what was mentioned by Hall and Hall and Hunter Skogman. The neighborhood is trying to work with them, but we're also wanting to be transparent. And so I was also at the meeting that they had. And at the very beginning, we had built our houses and city council said it's up to our responsibility to research the neighborhood before we build, which is what most of us did. And I was specifically told it was supposed to be the duplexes and homes. And so after you build your house, you know, you've already invested in that. At the meeting, one of the biggest concerns is they did mention the substation. And they said, well, really apartments would be better because what house would want to be behind it? But I asked Hunter to turn around because I said, if you look at Bowstring, those houses have the same look or the same impact as what you would put the apartments. We'd also mentioned if we could lower it to six buildings, even if it did go through instead of eight, because it would have even less traffic, more trees, because there's only one tree allotted per building, I believe, is what I looked on the plans. And they did allow more parking, but only seven spots. And so that that is only one spot per building. That's still there. I did ask them to turn around in the meeting because they felt it was sufficient parking. And at that exact time, we looked at the street that was just above them, Bowstring. And there was eight cars in the street parked, even in the housing addition. So parking is very much an issue that we have. We didn't have too much conversation when I was there on Archer being gone through. We did know that that was going to be a cul-de-sac. That is not the issue. It's just kind of staying with the plan and letting the neighbors before they build a house know what it's going to be and being transparent. So I think to even still keep it as duplex is our ideal recommendation. Or the other recommendation is drop it to at least six so that you're out of the flood plain and that you have less traffic than even the seven. You could put more trees and definitely additional parking instead of just seven. And the people that would rent, they deserve to have a better view and have more trees and things around that area. So in taking a look at that, I want it to be something that's a betterment to the neighborhood, not just a revenue for, you know, Midwest investments. So we're looking at it as our investment in our home as well.
Okay, thank you, Terry. Do we have anybody else online?
I have nobody else wishing to speak, no.
Okay, we'll give it another minute. Have we did, has staff received any other comments, Tom?
No.
From the public?
No.
Thank you.
I think Lauren wishes to speak again. If you want to allow that.
Lauren, yeah, that's fine. It's a public hearing. So Lauren, you back on the line?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I did, I just wanted to comment. The former gal is correct. We do show seven stalls to be installed with, we're talking on the topic of parking. Seven stalls to be put in with with our proposed development. However, you know, if parking becomes an issue, we have allotted, I believe it's another like 10 to 12 stalls or something like that, or even more. We can, we can see in more detail on upcoming site plan, but do know that we have space allotted for it. But knowing that there's a similar neighborhood within a half mile of this where they do not have parking and actually a resident from that neighbor. Current resident of Bowman Meadows formerly lived at this other complex that's similar, where they do not have any additional offsite, off street parking. And it indicated that there wasn't wasn't really any issues with parking. Now, we we don't necessarily think that is the case. Obviously, folks will be having gatherings and parties and whatnot, you know, Christmas parties or whatever. And so we did want to make sure that we did account for some of that parking. Granted, if if there were some concerns about folks parking on the east side of Alvernet Road, that's kind of a a natural barrier. I don't anticipate that causing an an issue that there's a cul-de-sac and there really isn't any good connection anywhere in the vicinity of this campus for folks to be parking offsite other than making room onsite. And we have accommodated for that future growth. That's all I have.
Yeah, I do recall listening in on a planning and zoning meeting a month ago that there that was a much longer discussion even than we went through tonight by Tom. That there was seven additional spots they had tonight, but they did document at that time sites where they can add more parking if that was deemed necessary. Okay, anymore, anybody else on the line?
The three that have their hands raised, if you can put something in the Q and A if you're wishing to speak, otherwise, if you can lower your hand. So Jason Stone with Hall and Hall wishes to speak again.
Jason, do you have one more comment?
Yeah, yep. I can, I can speak a little bit more to the parking. So originally, I think we, there was, there was, there wasn't any parking provided, but I just want to clarify the number of stalls we do have. So what we have right now is that there's 10 stalls that are provided in addition to all of the driveways. And as Lauren mentioned before, we have, it's 15 additional stalls that are slated for future if there is the need for additional parking. And one of the other items that we did add to the site plan was previously, we had, I think it was one tree per building. We did add more landscaping throughout, so there's additional trees, there's additional shrubs throughout the site in addition to what we did add on the north property line and what's already shown on the west property line. Just wanted to add those couple of items, but other than that, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else?
Terry Shiflett has another question.
Terry, go ahead. One more question? A comment? Do you have a comment, Terry?
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay, thank you. And regarding Hall and Hall, that was Larry that you were talking about, and he lives up the street. I was asked to kind of speak for the group here tonight. And he is the one that lived in your other complex that you built. He made very positive comments about the building itself, but when we asked about parking, he said that was a nightmare. He said that was the worst thing about the complex is there was no parking for anybody. So I think that was a misunderstanding. As far as the quality of the building, he had no compliments and it said it worked well for them. So that was one of the issues we still have. The other thing is why build something even if there is a risk of a flood plain? If you made it at least six, that would reduce that risk as well as having parking. And if you're going to have the parking and the trees, I think that should be in your plot that you have online because it's not currently, I'm looking at that and that's not on there. But otherwise, ideally, most of them I talked to just recently would still like it to be duplexes. But the rest of us, if it's going to go through, would like to see it at least reduced to six buildings. And I'm not speaking just for myself. We were just trying to, everybody's busy with trying to teach kids online with COVID and everything else. They don't have a lot of time to sit and spend an hour or two online. So thank you for taking my time.
Okay, thank you, Terry. Anybody else?
I have nobody else waiting, no.
Okay, with nobody else waiting and not hearing any comments, not the staff not receiving any comments, we will close the public hearing. And we will move on to the resolution.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number 29124, approving an amendment to the Marion future land use map of the Marion comprehensive plan from single family detached residential to multifamily residential for property located east of Alvernet Road Extended Midwest Development Company.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve resolution number 29124, approving the amendment to the Marion future land use map for this multifamily residential project east of Alvernet Road Extended. Okay, so let's open it up to the city council for comments and questions. Does anybody have, Grant, go ahead?
Yeah, thank you. So I think we've got a couple of additional resolutions further down in the agenda. It, at what point would we discuss the number of buildings? Wouldn't that be in one of the, one of the forthcoming resolutions?
That'd be further down.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So I think this is really talking about just the amendment to the
Right.
land use. Going from single family to multifamily. Are there any other questions or comments by the city council? If not, all those in favor of approving resolution number 29124, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Okay, the resolution is approved with one abstention.
May I propose, I move to approve resolution number 29125, approving the Bowman Meadows seventh edition. I move to approve resolution number two nine one two five, approving the Bowman Meadows Seventh Edition Preliminary Platte for property located east of Albernat Road Extended, Midwest Development Company.
Second.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second for, to approve resolution number two nine one two five, approving the Bowman Meadows Seventh Edition Preliminary Platte for property located east of Albernat Road Extended. Now we can talk about your question about the number of units.
Okay, so just, thank you, your honor. I, I've ex- uh, I've experienced uh, these situations in the, in my past relative to how something would be constructed specifically. Uh, a large substation uh, off of V Avenue in Cedar Rapids. Um, I guess, is the, is there any opportunity for additional residential discussion with uh, with Midwest to come to, I guess, a, a, a clear um, understanding and equilibrium relative to the number of buildings on, on the project?
Are you, are you saying you have a concern about?
I, I guess what I'm just trying to ascertain is, is, um, are, is, are all stakeholders at a resting point on, on how this is intended to be developed based on the resolutions that we have? That's what I'm trying to gauge is just where, where we're at. I, I guess I'm not, I guess I'm just not sensing that there is, given the adjustments made thus far, that while an additional adjustment of one less building would be useful and appreciated, I'm just trying to understand if we're, uh, if that is a, uh, a critical game uh, stop for us, I.
Well, I think the comment I would ask about that one, Grant, is some of the comments seem to indicate that if you go from seven to six, then one of them would not be the floodplain. And that's kind of what I was hearing. And I guess, could we get clarification? I thought I heard earlier by Hall and Hall that by going from eight to seven and making the changes they did, they eliminated the concern that none of these are in the floodplain. Can we get confirmation on that? Is that, is that kind of the concern? I went from eight to seven, so going from seven to six, what does that really change? Tom, are you online?
I, I am, I would, uh, I mean, I, I think it would be good to ask uh, the developers to, um, probably Jason or, or to, to address that. I mean, they're, they're the owners of the plan, so I think that would be a good, a good idea.
Jason, are you online still?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, could you answer the question about whether at seven, all of these are out of the floodplain? And what impact, if any, going from seven to six uh, really would be?
So I would say when we originally were at eight, we actually didn't have any of the buildings in the floodplain. When we reduced it to seven, we still don't have any. Um, the portion of the site that is in the floodplain is just, it's a, it's the drive aisle on the very east side. And I'd say it's probably like a, an area that's maybe twenty by ten. Um, and it's just the drive aisle, none of the driveways and none of the buildings are within the floodplain.
Grant, why don't you rephrase your question with Jason on the line?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so what I, what I heard uh, from the public comments were uh, two concerns. One was floodplain, which you just addressed. And then the other principal concern I heard was parking. And so I guess my question would be uh, two parts. One is, under the current design with seven buildings, is there an opportunity to have additional parking over and above the seven you've already added? And then um, I guess I'd like uh, confirmation if it went to a, down to six buildings, that that remaining space could be then converted to parking. I guess I'm really trying to look at how, is there any additional relief on the parking constraint?
So the, the parking, um, right now, we have ten stalls shown to be built with the development. Um, and then we have, in addition to that, there's fifteen um, future stalls that we had shown that we would, we're just allowing some space that if there is parking requirements or additional parking that we need, um, that we have space allotted for, there is, there is additional space to add more if need be. Um, the, the areas where we do have parking or future parking, those are also out of the floodplain. So if those were to be paved, um, once the site is developed and they, there's shown that the need of additional parking is, is needed, that um, these stalls would not be in the floodplain. Um, just like I, I mentioned, there, there's, it's a very, very, very small portion of the site that is in the floodplain. Um, and I would say reducing the buildings from seven down to six, that we would stop, we, we'd probably, just because for, for connectivity, to connect the drives um, all the way around this, throughout the site. Um, that if we did reduce it down to um, six buildings, that we would probably still have a small portion of the site in the floodplain. And again, it would be the same location that we have it right now, and it's just that a, a portion of the drive aisle.
Okay, so just, uh, regarding parking, there, there is opportunity within a uh, seven-building configuration to add additional parking as needed.
Yeah, yep, so we've got them, right now they're shown on the perimeter drive aisles. Um, and like I mentioned, we have fifteen uh, future stalls shown. If there is a need to add more, um, if we see that parking is an issue, there is, there is going, additional space can be allotted for it. Um, but it would all be concentrated around the perimeter of the, of the, of the drive aisles.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Colette?
Sure, I just, um, regarding the parking, a little, little more clarification. So how, how many parking spaces are there currently total?
So right now, if you, if you include the driveways that are in front of all of the garage, so I guess, right now, the total, the amount of space that each unit would have is they would have um, their garages, they would have a driveway. So that would be four cars right there. And then in addition to that, we would have ten stalls that would be paved with the development. Um, and those ten stalls will be spread out through all of the units. Um, and then if additional parking is needed, we do have space, so like I mentioned before, allotted on the perimeter. Um, this isn't too different from, um, I guess what you'd see in a single-family development, that you have, say a two-car garage, you have a driveway. Um, where you can park two additional cars. And yeah, there is the potential when people do have large gatherings that they park on the streets. Um, Albernat Road, there won't be any parking allowed on it. Um, so I would say that the, the ten stalls that we do have shown in, in addition to the additional that we would have um, space allotted for, that it, yeah, I think it'd be ample parking. And I believe there's no, there's not a requirement for this type of development to have additional parking. Um, it's just, we, we added this, um, seeing that it was a concern of the neighbors um, at the, at the meetings. Um, so like I mentioned, I think all in all, if we did pave all of the future stalls, there would be the garages, the driveways, um, and then twenty-five parking stalls. And then like I, like I did mention, there is space if we need additional that we can add it still.
Okay, thank you.
Randy?
Yes, um, two questions. One is, is can you tell us how wide um, the proposed street is um, that you're referring to on the off, off-site parking of the street?
So the, um, the drive aisles on the development, they're, they're twenty-foot wide. Um, the stall widths and dimensions would be typical that you see in the area. We're not producing any of those. Um, so the, it'd be all of the drive aisles um, are twenty-foot in width.
Okay. And my second and last question, I know the city doesn't have anything to do with um, HOAs, but will this be an HOA development?
Um, I, I think Hunter may be able to speak a little bit more to that one.
And I'm ju- and again, I'm just looking for a yes or no.
Yeah.
I don't want to.
Yeah, I honestly, I'm, I'm not too sure. I believe it would be an HOA, but I, I guess if Hunter, if you're still online, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think there would be an HOA.
Um, y- yes, probably, uh, likely there would be, but what I, we haven't, quite honestly, you haven't finalized that yet.
Okay, thank you. The reason for my direction to that is, is obviously a tw- a twenty-foot wide driveway um, or your road, providing parking on the site on that, it would be up to the HOA as far as they're permitted um, parking on both or one or the other side. So I just um, wanted to bring that topic to light. Thank you.
That's all.
Yeah, if I, if I look at it from my perspective, uh, again, I was one who voted no back in June. Um, and I went back and pulled out my notes and looked at all the concerns that, we had a, a number of phone calls from residents in the neighborhood, many more than we had tonight. And I think, uh, there was only two calls I recall, two phone calls at the PNZ meeting. But if I, I looked at my list of comments, concerns and all of that, and I think uh, they've done a very good job of trying to resolve and take care of those issues in this new proposal. So from my perspective, I think they've, um, you're never going to satisfy everybody in the neighborhood, but I think they've taken care of a great deal of the neighborhood's concerns. And, and I think that neighborhood meeting helped and they made a number of modifications, so. So do we have any other comments or questions before we move on?
Your, your honor.
Tom, go ahead.
Yes, so uh, the, this item is specific to the preliminary plat. Um, the preliminary site development plan is the next item. And so if there is a desire to change anything on the next item would be that, the, the location of the discussion. The preliminary plat's really addressing the layout of the land, just, just so you're, you're aware.
Yeah, so I got ahead of myself on that, but a lot of our discussion here does apply to the next item. But, yeah, I caught myself after we started down that road. So, but thank you. Okay, uh, hearing no other discussion, uh, we've had a motion and a second to approve resolution number wa- two nine one two five, approving the Bowman Meadows Seventh Edition Preliminary Platte. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Okay, the resolution is approved with one abstention.
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve resolution number two nine one two six, approving the Bowman Meadows Seventh Edition Preliminary Site Development Plan for property located east of Albernat Road Extended, Midwest Development Company.
Second.
So we got a motion and a second to approve resolution number two nine one two six, approving the Bowman Meadows Seventh Edition Preliminary Site Development Plan. So this is actually the, the opportunity, if we feel that there should be any modifications or changes to what we just discussed in the last several minutes, uh, that we would probably want to make that known. Do we have anything else that, we have anything we want to mention or any other concerns? Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of approving resolution number two nine one two six, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved, and I will move the meeting back to the mayor.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve resolution number two nine one two seven, approving a final site development plan for Electric Specialty Manufacturing located at six four five one Partners Avenue, Marion, Iowa.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve resolution number two nine one two seven, approving the final site development plan for Electric Specialty Manufacturing at sixty-four fifty-one Partners Avenue. Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty dash thirteen, approving an amendment to section one seventy-six point five one, table six, and one seventy-six point five one, table seven, regarding permitted uses within the BR Business Regional and OS Office Services Zoning Districts. This is second consideration.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve ordinance number twenty dash thirteen, approving an amendment to section one seventy-six point five one, table six and one seventy-six point five one, table seven, regarding permitted uses within the BR Business Regional and OS Office Services Zoning Districts. This is the second consideration. Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty dash fifteen, approving an update to the Marion Zoning Map for property located within City Council Ward Two, which includes precincts five, six, and seven. Second consideration.
Second.
It has been moved in second to approve ordinance number twenty dash fifteen, approving an update to the Marion Zoning Map for the property located within the City Council Ward Two, which includes precincts five, six, and seven. This is also the second consideration. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number two nine one two eight, approving contract with Bradbury Miller Associates regarding search for library director in the amount of twenty-four thousand dollars.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve resolution number two nine one two eight, approving a contract with Bradbury Miller Associates regarding a search for library director in the amount of twenty-four thousand dollars. Discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes, ma'am.
Sally Rick with the Library Board is on, uh, this is a new item since Tuesday, so she wanted to um, speak about it.
Sure, Sally, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Thank you, your honor, and council members. Uh, we appreciate your adding this to the agenda for this evening. Our uh, Library Board met on Monday and we reviewed two proposals made to us and decided that Bradbury Miller was going to be the best fit for our pursuit of a new library director. We did use their services back in two thousand fifteen and were extremely pleased with the professionalism. Uh, what really attracted us this time was their addition of um, having um, a commitment to a diversity search, which can be rather challenging in the field of library science. But we have total confidence in them and look forward to working with them.
Okay. Anyone have questions for Sally? Okay, any discussion on this item? Okay, we'll vote. All those in favor of resolution number two nine one two eight, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Thank you.
This brings us to the end of the um, agenda with uh, one presentation left on the agenda for the twenty-twenty storm response update.
Thank you, your honor. Just wanted to let everybody know, um, wanted to call people's attention to the city website that uh, we, now that we've moved into the waterway removal, right now we are uh, working actively south of Highway one hundred, which would be down off of Tama, the Foxwoods area. And if you look at the city's website, if you want to get updates related to that, it's not one of the buttons on the landing page. But if you look at the top of the page, toward the right-hand side, there is a link to storm response. So as we move into other areas of the community, we will update those maps. Uh, residents can continue to look at those periodically. It shows the areas that we're going to be working on, broken up by section, but also the authorized entrances for where our contractors are going to be moving in and out of those areas. So as we move north and continue to work our way through the community along the waterways, that's going to be our primary source of information. If you've been out there and driven along Highway one hundred, you may have seen some of the heavy equipment coming in, out of there. It looks a little different than what people were used to as we were working on the public right-of-way. Uh, you might notice it has a lot more similarities to a logging operation, but uh, they're getting, making some good progress down there. It's just going to be a long haul for us to get all of that done.
Okay. Thanks for the update, questions?
Just a quick, go ahead.
Just a quick question. Now, now that this crew, which has been used to being in the south and not up in the north, and now that they've actually had a taste of our winter, uh, how are they handling that? And do we foresee that doing all of this work in the winter is going to present any additional challenges?
I have not talked to them directly, so I would defer to Public Services Director Miller on that.
Yep, please come to the microphone, thank you.
Your Honor and counsel, we did meet with uh, as
Your honor and council, we did meet with SDR ongoing last week and this week. We're actually going to double the crew force. And so the reason is twofold. Number one, yeah, they're not acclimated to these weather conditions, although they're doing fine. What we're finding out is that this is a very unique project. Typically, this type of debris removal is in the south, in southern waterways, and they have approached it like that. However, with the amount of debris, which is significant, and the the different environment they got to work with, we are going to double those crews. So right now, we have four crews in those sections. So go on the website, you'll see you'll see four different maps. And they thought they could get those four sections done by next week, but there's a lot of debris. And so we're going to double those crews. We'll have eight crews running. And then as in January, we'll come back, we got to prove their contract yet. And we're there's certain provisions we got to put in there. Right now, we just give them a notice to proceed. And so when we come back with that, we'll lay out the schedule, not only for the Indian Creek Waterways, but we also have the Squaw Creek Waterway as well as the Dry Creek Waterway. So we'll give you a pretty in-depth scope on what this looks like. But the the intent of getting them in there is to to get acclimated and to see how much resources they're going to need to get this project done. The concern is, we have a six month window per FEMA to get debris removal done from the declaration date. You can ask for an additional six month window. All right. So that's going to take us to August of next year. And so we want to move as fast as we can on the waterways. We want to get as much debris out of there as we can. So that's that's why we're pushing this. And so if we can get with everything, the category debris removal done, they'll be eligible for FEMA reimbursements. We don't want to be stuck doing that work for the next five to six years. So.
So does their efficiency factor go down because of the winter conditions?
Um, I don't think it what it's going to come down to is weather conditions. Number one, how wet it's going to be. Mud's going to slow you down. But if we get insignificant snowfall. So right now, no. As they take that heavy equipment, they pack it in the snow, they're learning, you know. And so and one other thing we have going for us is that we have great access to the waterways. They've done a great job getting access and easement agreements from the property owners. They've done a great job working with them. And so they are moving very, very quickly. However, yeah, we're gonna we're gonna double the resources.
Good. It's good news.
Yep.
Any questions for Ryan? Questions for Lon? Okay, thank you to both of you. Appreciate all your hard work. It's ongoing. Now we're in the fourth month. Okay, at this time, we have a public forum, which is time set aside for comments from the public on any topic not covered by the agenda. Do we have anyone who is has asked to address the council?
I do not current. Oh, yes. Brian Griswold, five five zero Lindale Drive.
Okay, Mr. Griswold?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can. Welcome.
Well, thank you. I think I missed it. I was one item ago on the rezoning of Ward Two. I think I missed my chance to buzz in. Can I make a comment or I got two questions? Can I can I ask those?
Sure. Yeah, we do have one more reading of that. So you're 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 welcome to make your comments.
Okay. At the last council meeting, we had raised some concerns about rezoning of the rest of the wards related to timing and, you know, the derecho efforts. And I know that the other gal, Terry, that spoke on the that apartment complex, that she was the only one that was going to do it because everybody was busy with teaching kids and whatnot. So I don't know if if the council had put any more thought into the timeframe for rezoning the rest of the wards, if that was going to go right away, or if there was going to be maybe a delay on that, in a hope that maybe public comment or, you know, that the city buildings would be able to be open again, maybe in the spring or something.
Okay, so we can certainly find that or get that information and email it to you if that's okay. We can read, we can communicate with you outside the meeting when when we have the information from the Community Development Director.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. I'll I'll be in touch with you by email.
Perfect. Thank you.
Great. Do we have your email address? Yes.
I don't.
Oh, would you mind? Would you mind just sending me an email on my city email address?
Um, sure. And what would that be to?
You'll you'll find that on the on the city website.
Okay, yep, perfect.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else?
I have not received any other comments.
Okay, then we'll close the public forum and remind members of the public that you can always reach out to any council member via phone or email outside the meeting on any topic. Okay, at this time, we have council comments. So Steve?
Yeah, my I just have one comment, and it goes back really to the first item we talked tonight, and that is the winter lights. I have received a number of positive comments. Myself personally, I think they look terrific. And the one thing I believe we really need to make a plan for, not only, I think there needs to be a plan, not only in working with the chamber, but the city also needs to be involved in making a continued annual investment in this area, so that in another five years, people go through this city and they just go, wow. So this is a good start, but I think we got the opportunity to continue to really improve it and make Marion a place that people want to go to this time of year.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Randy?
I would just like to wish everyone happy holidays.
Thank you.
Great. Yes, ditto here. I wish everybody a great set of holidays, restful. And we've been through a lot this year in a lot of different dimensions. But I think our citizens and all of us here at the city representing the city can feel extremely proud of the efforts that have been made this year to help get us back on track. So happy holidays, everybody.
Thank you. For my part, I just have a couple minutes of comments here. Goes without saying, as if others have said, you know, this has been a trying year, twenty twenty. And for many people, you know, it's been, there's been a lot of impact on the community, and all of us were impacted in one way or another, whether it's business or individuals. And we all had faced some kind of a challenge from this year. In many ways, this year seemed like it was five years. So as we come to the end of this year, you know, we had a deadly pandemic, derecho disaster, racial issues, and a divisive national election all in this year. And we had a lot to deal with. But in the midst of the tragedy, the the heartbreak, all the challenges, we also had a lot of positives. And we saw our community pull together and define community as we responded to the worst natural disaster in Marion's history. I've never felt more proud, and everybody knows how proud I am of of our city. And I've never felt more proud to be in Marionite and more honored to be on this team as I did in those weeks following the derecho. The kindness and the selflessness, the compassion and the caring for others that were shown were just incredibly moving. In an economically, in an economically difficult year for many people, we've seen human service organizations be blessed with people's generosity as they take care of the people who need the help the most. We've seen businesses become creative and finding ways to adapt to a new normal and survive. We had a number of new businesses open, actually, across the city, and twelve in the uptown, in a very uncertain economy. We've seen our community be creative in reimagining events and programs that enrich lives and continue providing those opportunities for people. We formed a COVID task force that brings together leaders and is still active from across the community to keep a watch over developments and share perspectives on how to best help residents and businesses weather the storm and come through it as successfully as possible. We formed a racial equity task and inclusion task force that is now working to help us better who we are. We saw the entire city team worked tirelessly for weeks on the retro response, and they're still working, setting Marion apart and earning the gratitude of residents. We saw our economic development partners capably lead and serve as a vital hub of resources and information for businesses who are desperate for guidance in an uncertain time. We were part of a great public-private collaboration that brought together the holiday lights and brought cheer to a city that is in need of some reasons to smile. We saw a group of high school students who created energy and excitement across the state out of derecho debris and raised money to plant new trees. We have development projects throughout the community and are preparing to celebrate the opening of the YMCA and the new headquarters fire station. I mean, I could go on and on and on. This has been a trying year, and there are concerns and things we need to improve and work on. But if we choose to, we can also find plenty of positives. And there's so much to celebrate still. We're very blessed. So I just want to thank all of the city council, the city leadership, our city manager, his entire team, every member of the Marion city team. Thank you for all your leadership, your hard work, your commitment, your sacrifices in this year, your perseverance. We can't, we can't thank you enough for your commitment to the the people of Marion and to continue to serve them and to give them a great quality of life. I know that we have better days ahead. And my hope is that we'll continue to show the world what community can accomplish when we see the best in each other, give each other the benefit of the doubt, and work together for common goals. So as we approach the holidays, I just want everyone to know that you have my best wishes for health and happy holidays. If you celebrate Christmas, Merry Christmas to you and your loved ones. If you celebrate another holiday, happy holiday. And I'm looking forward to starting off next year fresh and looking forward to better days ahead. So thank you to all, and have a great weekend. And we move on to our closed session, and I will turn it over to the mayor for this.
Yes, I make a motion to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation as permitted under section twenty one point five one C of the Code of Iowa.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to move in the closed session. Can we have our legal statement, please?
Thank you. I have reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code Section twenty one point one five C.
Thank you. Roll call?
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mayor Rob Losley? Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Sterned?
Yes.
Okay, so at this time, we are moving out of open session into closed session. Thank you.